All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 7:30. Today is Monday, March 18th. We'll start our meeting like we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, sir. Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, okay. All right, good evening, everyone. First thing we'll do is we'll grant Westwood Media the right to videotape the meeting. Ask if anybody else wants to videotape it? Parents? Nothing? Okay. All right. So we have two young ladies with us this evening and their families and probably some friends and relatives too to come in and join us. We have Julia Drainville and Grace, is it Muira?
Muira.
Muira, thank you. Two Hanlon fifth graders entered the school-wide assembly to balloons and applause on February 15th. They learned out of 1,800 essays entries in the Invest Right competition sponsored by the S.I.F.A.F.M.A. Foundation, and their essays were both winners. It's a nationwide contest, and Julia Drainville came in first. Congratulations. And we also have Grace who came in in ninth. These essays for the students were asked to choose an entrepreneur, to research his or her organization, and then offered informed investment advice. Julia wrote about Clara Barton, the founder of the American Red Cross, while Grace chose to write about Blake Mycoskie, the creator of Tom Shoes and the charitable component called One for One Deal. Grace and Julia were showered with gifts from the Prize Patrol. That's pretty cool. In addition to balloons, trophies, medals, and banners, Julia also won a cash prize, a camera, and a laptop computer. At the event, Grace and Julia signed the banners that will be hanging in the gymnasium at the Hanlon School. Do the ladies want to come up?
Yeah. Good job, girls.
So we figured you'd have plenty of citations at this point in time, so we got you some flowers. All right? And we're gonna take a photo with you. You know, nothing like a good photo op.
Oops.
So from over here to our official sign. Yes?
Congratulations, ladies. You feel fantastic?
Sure.
Are you an inspiration to any of this great success?
I'm just a technologist. This is our second year.
I know. We're photographers. They just say, just go where they help me.
Tech politics now?
Yes.
Ladies?
So I just want to say, what an inspiration you guys are to your classmates and everything else. You dream big and you are so accomplished. So can't wait to see what you do in the next few years here in the Westwood Public Schools. You're gonna be all-stars. Well, you already are, but you're gonna be rock stars too. So, well done.
Yes, congratulations. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. It won't be really all that exciting.
Then you can write about it and tell people.
Or not.
Or not. Thank you for joining us.
But you're welcome to stay. You don't have to stay. If you guys want to sneak out now, you can, sure. Absolutely.
Such a nice example for everybody in town.
I wouldn't dare do that to you guys and make you stay. Especially because Pam's up next, but no.
Thank you for joining us. Good night.
All right. Moving along on the chairman's update, we have some unfortunate news that the Blue Heart Tavern building has been evaluated. Did you want to jump in, Mike, anytime? I'll just read the notes that I have that they're getting ready to move it again and had to call in a structural engineer. Well, a structural engineer determined that the Blue Heart Tavern cannot be moved in its present condition, and therefore it's gonna probably be demolished. We also had Peter Paravlos from the Historical Commission go in. They are going to remove whatever they can for historical purposes, but unfortunately the building's not gonna survive a move. And the only good news out of that entire thing is that we get the land so we can have more green space around the new library.
And I understand that it would've had to have been shored up and a lot of investment to move it that would have compromised the historic significance of the building.
As Nora pointed out, the historic significance is what's there. A lot of it would have been replaced in order to shore it up and would've cost a significant amount of money on top of it. Giorgio was very disappointed. He wanted to try and figure out any way he could do it because he expended a significant amount of money in designing.
Need the mic on, Mike? Mic on, Mike.
Giorgio expended a significant amount of money in the design of the rehab of the building and was really disappointed when he first approached us and looking for ways to save it. But Peter confirmed for us that it just, well, it could be done, but not without.
And we had long since decided there wasn't a use for the town to become the owners of the building. It's not our building.
Right.
It's Giorgio's building.
Right. And he's also giving up a grant the state would've put toward it as well, so.
So I do want to just say for the record that the Historical Commission Chair could not be here. She's actually traveling. But she did send us an email telling us how disappointed she was, I guess "to say" would be a good word, that it can't continue. So we do understand, unfortunately, it was never our building from the beginning, right? He moved it from 320 Washington or 321 down there to see if he could perhaps save it, but.
And he could've demolished it probably a year or two ago?
Yes. Nora, come on up and join us. Make sure we get off fact straight.
Yes. So the original special permit that the planning board granted in April 2016 for 301-321 Washington Street involved the relocation of that building. The planning board required that the building be stored through November of 2017 to allow time for people to consider whether there was any way to save it. Then when the special permit for the Islington Center redevelopment project was approved in April of 2018, there was an opportunity to save land on Washington Street, which the selectmen and the planning board reserved on a plot. The selectmen signed a land disposition agreement that allowed that parcel of land to go to the person who was interested in restoring the Blue Heart Tavern. There was a date in the land disposition agreement that expired in September of 2018. It was actually related to the town meeting approval, the Attorney General's approval of that, and then there was a 10-day period, which was the deadline for finding someone who was interested in restoring it. That deadline also passed after the November 17 deadline passed, then the September 18 deadline passed with no takers. Giorgio Petruzziello had already spent significant funds. In fact, to date, he spent $137,000 on the Blue Heart Tavern to relocate it and to design a reuse of that building. So by December, he decided that he didn't want to throw away the money he'd already spent. He would continue on the project, and he spent more funds on design and was hoping to move it. In February, he contacted Richard Geddes, who had moved the building the first time, actually moved other buildings in town. I know he moved the Colburn School.
There aren't many companies who do that.
Yes. And he said he needed a structural review to confirm that the building was movable because he was doubtful that it was. So Giorgio then hired a structural engineer to take a look at it, and that structural engineer came back and said that the building would fall apart when it was lifted up if there was not significant replacement of all the structural elements, the floors, the walls, the framing, the roof, trusses, everything had to be replaced. So Mike called in Peter Paravlos, who was the former chair of the Westwood Historical Commission and does this for a living. He's an engineer specializing in relocation of historic buildings. He took a look at it, confirmed the structural engineer's report, and said that he agreed that all that work would have to be done before it could be moved. That's not to say it couldn't be moved, but the expense of about $250,000 to $270,000 would've had to go in it just to get it to a condition that it could be moved. Then once it was relocated to the new site, there would probably be another $600,000 that would have to be spent to rehabilitate the building for proper use. And what Peter Paravlos pointed out was that at that point, since the building was slated to be used for commercial and residential purposes, the upgrades that would be needed to make it meet code would remove what little historic fabric remained. So you would have a completely new building, and the only way to preserve it would be to spend that $250,000, $275,000 to relocate it and then retain all of the interior portions of the building as a museum. You couldn't use it for anything other than that. It would not meet building code. It was questionable whether the building commissioner could even allow that. So in any event, Giorgio took a hard look at it and decided that it just was not feasible at this point. And so he notified the town that he is no longer planning to rehabilitate the building. Based on the planning board's 2016 decision and the land disposition agreement, he has the right to demolish the building, and he has had that right since last September. So the plan is for the building to come down sometime this week.
And I'll note, was one other person interested in that person after this support? There's not interest that I have.
That's correct. And then I reached out to another person who had early on in the project expressed interest, Todd Sullivan, who had his former office in that building before it was condemned and he had to move out. So I checked with him, and he also looked into it and said it just is not feasible and there's not much left. I will point out one other thing. They did remove the mantelpieces, which we thought were the only truly historic fabric left in the building that was salvageable. There were dates on the back of those mantelpieces. They were installed in 1967.
1967.
So they were replicas, unfortunately.
That's a good idea.
So, you know, there just doesn't appear to be anything.
Are the materials, hearing all that and understanding it's unfortunate and is what it is, but the wood or anything else, is there anything that's salvageable by anybody who would then use it in?
I don't think so. So all of the moldings, there's paneling that was also installed in the '50s and '60s. The floors are not original. It's really only the structure itself. So the floorboards, the trusses, those are original material, and they're compromised.
Yeah, maybe I watch too much HGTV, you know, but sometimes things get repurposed.
Stay away from the DIY channels.
Yeah, well, for sure.
According to Mike Parkins, who's our assistant building inspector who has looked at the site, he doesn't see anything as salvageable.
Okay, well, it's unfortunate, but unfortunately, it is what it is.
Well, I think it's appropriate to convey to Mr. Petruzziello that we appreciate his efforts to try to preserve the building, and we're sorry.
It's just not the outcome we had hoped for.
No, and I know Nancy put a lot of time into it too. She did that presentation for us. Yes, Nancy Donahue did that presentation for us, and as you can imagine, her email expresses the disappointment.
Very disappointed. The hope was to save this building.
So, thank you, Nora.
Thank you.
And now we have our financial updates. That must mean it's time for Ms. Dukeman.
If you told the young girls, we told their parents, we'd be happy to hire them whenever they're ready to.
Aren't they impressive, what they did? Really cool. Smart young ladies.
A lot of great ladies coming in front of us lately.
I know. Good timing.
So we have tonight your final look at the budget before we send the information to the Finance and Warrant Commission for their final public hearing next Monday night on the budget. So we just have a package to go through, and you'll recall that we came in at your last meeting and went through a lot of the material in draft form, and there's not really been any changes to that material since then. But just starting out with this presentation in front of you here, the first items are just the Article I and II, the budget supplements to the current year. And again, we walked through these at your last meeting, and there's no change to that. Pretty minor adjustments. Article I, doing just the transfer from the building maintenance expense to salary for the change in structure this year. We are doing $100,000 for snow and ice for some of the late-season activity, and we do have the $100,000 for the school security projects. And we mentioned that at this point, that is not any particular project, but if later in the spring the school gets their report back and would like to move forward with some items, this would give them some initial money to do that.
Question on that, can we treat that like the capital items where it comes back to us for approval before we release that money? Because I think, given it's not specifically identified in terms of the projects, I think it'd be worth talking about. It was, you know, standalone warrant article, and I just think it would be good to have a required stop here.
We could add that language underneath that we have on our capital projects.
Okay.
Yep.
And will we have to do more than $100,000 for snow and ice? Assuming we don't get any more snow?
Do you actually receive most recent bills? We're just tabulating everything right now. I think we're gonna be, I don't want to jinx anything, because every time we say something, something happens, so.
I know.
We'll get back to you.
It's pretty close.
I think we're okay.
Okay, so far, yes.
You recall, we do, we try to do a good chunk of it at the town meeting, transfer. There are other ways to supplement that, either at the year-end closeout or raising that on the recap in the following year. So we never kind of fully accommodate the whole amount here.
Okay.
And then there were just some of the smaller salary adjustments for a couple of departments for staffing issues during the year that we had mentioned.
Yep, okay.
And then also the next page, Article II, same thing, pretty routine items that we have and a relatively small list. $73,500 in some ambulance services and equipment needs, $26,000 for some of the revale costs that we had. It was a full revale year in the assessing department. And those are funded by funds on hand. So those are the two supplement articles. And then moving on to the FY '20 budget articles. Just summarizing again, the proposed budget that you set out February 1, it was a very comprehensive plan that looked at providing for the needs throughout town, operating budget, capital budgets, or liabilities. So overall, we had the about 3.5% in our town and school operating budgets. We had base capital budgets, in total, $2.3 million for school municipal, $2.4 in additional capital, as we've tried to do each year, and then our transfers to the stabilization fund and the OPEB trust fund. So just going through the next couple of slides, what's changed since then or just reaffirming what we have in each of those articles. But our operating budget, the main budget to fund the school municipal budgets for FY '20, just a very few minor changes from what budget has been out there since February 1. Two of our outside assessments changed, the Blue Hills Regional School. The final assessment we received was less than what we had in the budget, so we've updated the budget to reflect that. For the sewer department, the MWRA assessment is a bit higher than what we had in the budget, so we reflect that change now that we know that number. And with that, the revenue estimate from the sewer changes also, so there's no overall budget impact. And then in accounting update and revision in the REC department, we have to take some staff that's been in the revolving account, add that to the town budget, but the corresponding revenue comes over also. So it's really just an accounting cleanup. There's no change to the overall budget.
And Pam, I just, and it will come up in other sections, I was at the entirety of the Finance Commission meeting last week that I know Mike Gillette was at as well for the budget discussions. And there are some things that I think merit your review and may be connecting back with the Finance Commission on some interpretations of budget items that I don't think were totally accurate. And for instance, it did speak to, in the police department, not adding personnel, which is not correct. And I think we just have to make sure how it's reflected in the narrative is consistent with the budget document, or people may become very confused.
Yes. So I did receive today the reports that those subcommittees did, and I will look at that and make sure when we go in next Monday night to just, you know, address anything.
Yeah, because there's a lot of information they're pulling together, and those things happen, but that one, and, you know, it just stood out as that would just really not be reflecting correctly to town meeting attendees.
Of what is really happening.
What's really happening and why it's happening and where we're funding it from and everything else, so, okay.
Just on the next slide, page six. This just shows the updated operating budget or appendix D with those three slight changes that we talked about. So the proposed budget, operating budget, our main area of spending, $94.5 million overall, about a 3.5% increase over the prior year. The table shows by category the various areas of where we're spending. So again, both the school and municipal operating budgets at about a 3.5% increase, our fixed cost budget at about a 4.1% increase, which is really not too bad considering where that can be some years with pension assessments and health insurance costs. And the bar graph at the bottom again shows that distribution by category. So really, a budget, this provides, you know, really sustainable, reasonable growth areas for those budgets that let them continue to provide quality services to the community. The next page, just a quick look again at our stabilization, our main savings account, which is so important to have for our bond rating and to protect the town in case of emergency. The $125,000 transfer from free cash, that would bring us in FY '20 up to about $3.2 million in the account, as shown in green. Our target's about $3.4 million, so we're really in good shape there. And the bar graph shows we just continue to do a small annual transfer each year to keep us on line with that account.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, at the FINCOM, I think they had that wrong. They said we were not putting money into the stabilization fund.
They were talking about the capital stabilization fund, but something that did get confused again in trying to assemble a lot of information was that this was added to other reserve accounts and free cash and presented as free cash is the technical term. Maybe the appropriate term would've been available cash, but this isn't available. This is a reserve account set aside, so it's not like it's part of a pool of money that we think we should be spending.
Yep.
This is quite the contrary.
Yeah, we should not be spending this.
Scenario we used was an asteroid striking Westwood.
It would be, yeah.
Yeah, that was a little dramatic, but.
And the town has not spent in quite a while, and it's just like.
There was a big boom Saturday night that we're still wondering what that was, so.
But this would be like in your personal finances where they say you should have an emergency reserve, you know, in case of something major.
Right. It's not what you look at as how can I spend it this year in the most meaningful way. It's, we don't touch it.
We don't touch it. It's a really important component of our credit rating, and it would be there. Things we've seen, you know, I want to say maybe 15 years ago, we might've used it when there was dramatic drop-off in state aid, unexpected.
In mid-year.
That type of thing.
Right, mid-year.
Mid-year, made a cut, and we were obligated to keep going.
And we also point out in, I think it was 2009 and '10 when we really had that significant decline in the economy, we had two years where our municipal and school budgets were level-funded, zero increase, really hard to maintain services under that scenario. And really, that's because we didn't have anything in the stabilization account at that time. So we've tried over these years since then to build this, and then that would be the type of thing where we could utilize that appropriately at that time to help us maintain services. So town's done a terrific job doing this. I think town meeting has supported this and understands. So again, I can look at that clarification with the FINCOM that this is really not what we look at in our spending, our funding things each year. And then just the next slide is the OPEB, the liability trust. And that bar graph shows what has been the annual funding each year towards the OPEB liability. So really, in a relatively short period of time, just under a 10-year period, we've really been able to go from doing nothing and just beginning to address the problem to really now being strongly on track and in good shape as far as this obligation goes. So we would fund here an Article 1.44 million, $25,000 higher than the prior year, and that's the plan that we have in line right now, is that we would increase that annual appropriation by about $25,000 each year until a point if there was some major change in our annual.
Assessment.
Assessment. But right now, this keeps us on great track. We currently have about $8.3 million in the liability trust account. With this appropriation, after July 1, we would have about $10 million in that account. And that's, you know, we're looking at the overall liability right now, long-term, is about $39 million. So we're, you know, well on our way towards addressing that.
A question again, was raised at the Finance Commission that I think you should be prepared to address next week, and that is, what happens if, what happens when a municipality doesn't do what we're doing and finds itself with this huge liability? Was it 30-year period we're supposed to be addressing this, or what's the timeframe? So we're way out there. Somebody hasn't done what they're supposed to do to work towards funding this obligation. What are the consequences?
So you're committed to paying for the health insurance for the retirees. So unless you get rid of that, you have to pay that, and what happens if you don't address the liability now as you go? You'd reach a certain point where we'd be coming in and showing you the operating budget, and 80% of that budget would be towards retiree health insurance because we would not have had any funding towards it. It would assume a huge amount of our annual funding. It was similar situation with pensions, and then the state put pension systems on mandated obligations. So you're paying as you go, so you don't reach a point where the obligation that you have to pay out the door is going to assume all of your budget and take away. You'd be laying off staff to fund health insurance and pension obligations if you didn't address your liability.
I gotta believe the bond rating drops significantly over time if a municipality is not addressing it?
Yes. So technically, we don't have to fund it. We technically have to fund the pension liability. We technically don't have to fund the OPEB liability, but if you were not on some kind of good funding schedule right now with a planned way to address the liability, that would be a serious implication for your bond rating. It's one of the major things. We talk about them every time when we have our ratings review. And what's been terrific for Westwood is that we have a very specific plan that we can go through with them. They can see very clearly. They go in and pull this information before we even meet, and they can see the planned addressing of the liability, the buildup over, you know, a number of years to get to what we need to do, and then having a plan that that would continue forward.
Okay.
And the amount being saved every year would've been in the budget at that amount or more if we hadn't made the adjustments we made to health insurance. So this is, we didn't raise any more money. We just shifted where we were spending it. We're not spending on today's health insurance for our employees. We're spending on the future liability.
Yeah, and really, the best thing that this town did was in the early years, 2009, we were one of the first to actually get the actuarial update done before it was required. You are required to update the liability every year, you know, if you're not required to fund. But we did our first ones, and we're talking about it before we really had any money. So in 2010 and '11, we would stand up at town meeting and talk about it and have nothing in the trust account. So then when we had some changes in healthcare, the town was supportive of directing those savings from that area of the budget to this liability. So it enabled us to build this up without taking away from other services in town, taking away from other budgets, or having to take new money to do it. It really was just a redirection of funds we were already spending. And now, because there is money in the trust account, the treasurer has that invested with the state PRIT program, and now it makes returns every year, and the money is working. That can be invested long-term because it's a long-term liability, so it does make some, it's been making some terrific returns each year. So in really good shape. We would not want to pull back from the work that's been done with this, and we've tried to just very slowly increase it so that we're not taking away from any other area in the budget. So then next, we have the capital budget articles. And the capital budget is so important, as the board knows, to continue to reinvest in our town and school buildings, our equipment, our infrastructure. We have made significant progress on increasing the capital budget over the last couple of years. And the budget you put out in FY '20 continues that investment. So we've talked in the capital budget with our base capital, kind of our main municipal and school capital budget articles. And the bar graph there shows what the total has been for those over the last six or seven year period. In FY '14, for all of our school municipal capital, we were spending about $823,000, far short of what we should be spending. We have financial policies that dictate what should be the level of ongoing capital reinvestment. Right now, that says it should be about $2.5 million. So we were spending not even a third of that in FY '14, and we had a very clear goal of trying to increase that over time. And as we've done with some of our other needs, we've kind of gradually worked at that, and each year tried to address and steer additional dollars towards the capital to build that up. Last year, we had $1.7 million in those two base articles, and this year in your proposed FY '20 budget, we have $2.3 million, almost at the target. So we've talked in the capital budget with our base capital, kind of our main municipal and school capital budget articles. And the bar graph there shows what the total has been for those over the last six or seven year period. In FY '14, for all of our school municipal capital, we were spending about $823,000, far short of what we should be spending. We have financial policies that dictate what should be the level of ongoing capital reinvestment. Right now, that says it should be about $2.5 million. So we were spending not even a third of that in FY '14, and we had a very clear goal of trying to increase that over time. And as we've done with some of our other needs, we've kind of gradually worked at that, and each year tried to address and steer additional dollars towards the capital to build that up. Last year, we had $1.7 million in those two base articles, and this year in your proposed FY '20 budget, we have $2.3 million, almost at the target. That is so important to make sure that we're continuing to do that. And with our financial policies, we put those out in the book that goes out to town meeting and goes to every home. We've been very, very clear that while we've made progress on other financial policies, we had really not been making the same progress on capital, and that was our goal to do so. So this year, we really are much closer to meeting that, which really is terrific. So I know there was a little bit of feedback from FinCom on some of the capital that it felt like a lot, but the $2.3 million is really what we should be spending on those base articles for school and municipal. We've had that policy for a long time. The, in the, in the article listing is the list of what's being funded in each of those, but they're really the ongoing annual needs to make sure that the school buildings stay in shape. For the municipal capital, this article here is all of our police, fire, and DPW equipment. We're on some good schedules as far as rotating equipment in and out so that, you know, that Todd can do his job when he needs to go out with the snow and ice, that they have good equipment, and the same for police and fire. So I think it's really, the progress and the buildup and getting closer to our goal is really an accomplishment for the town and what we've been striving towards. And this would be the level that we would want to stay at going forward.
Is this sustainable is going to be my question from Long Range Planning. Does this look like getting to the 2.3, 2.4 is actually going to be sustainable in the foreseeable future?
So what we've done the last couple of years is, as we've built this up, we've called those the base, and then we've had an additional capital article, and we have that the same this year. We've not changed the base articles until we're at a point we think it's sustainable. We do plan on that that would be the capital budget going forward of these two articles, about the $2.3 million.
Continuing to come from free cash.
Continuing to come from free cash. It's really the amounts that's needed to kind of do the ongoing capital that's needed. When we have the funds in that other capital article, we're saying, you know, we don't know if we can always commit to what's there, so we treat those more as kind of one-time, let's do some extra projects. But yes, we would plan that this would be our sustainable level. What we would come back when we start our next budget cycle, this is the level we would be starting at for capital. The other capital we have, the sewer capital, which is separate as it's funded with the sewer retained earnings. It's just over $1 million for FY '20. The sewer's on, again, on a regular schedule of trying to make sure that the infrastructure, the pipes are constantly reviewed, replaced, upgraded, so that there's not kind of any major damage to the system. The projects that they have going forward, there is one that's eligible for an MWRA grant program, which we've used in the past. So they would be looking and working with the MWRA on that. And it's that type of thing that if we're in that program and come back, there'd be less of the town's funds used and be participating with the MWRA. And then just a small article on ambulance where we split out things that are funded with specific funds. So those are kind of our base capital sewer and the ambulance. Then the other capital. So each year since FY '17, we've had an additional capital above the base. As we showed on that earlier chart, you know, we went a number of years where we weren't close at all to what we should have been doing in capital. So there was a buildup of projects. And so we've tried with this additional article to come in and say, let's try to do some of the things that might have been on hold for a while. Let's try to do a bigger project that really doesn't fit into the school and municipal base. It would take too much of it. Let's try to address that in this article. So we've done that now. This would be the fourth year in FY '20. We started in FY '17. What we were doing was using additional free cash that we had to fund capital projects. So we did about $750,000 in '17, $945,000 in FY '18, about $850,000 in the current year of the last budget of FY '19. The proposal for FY '20 is $2.3 million. So that is higher than what it's been in previous years. In particular, though, that is because now we do have the meals and hotel tax, and so we are applying some of that into this article, where we really only had a little bit of that in FY '19. Before that, we didn't have any of that. So that is one of the reasons causing the change. And I have a slide, a couple of slides, or I can go now to look at the meal and hotel tax, but that really, you know, only started recently. There was a little bit. Let me just go to that, and I can go back. If we just look at the meal and hotel tax on page 12. So this is additional revenue coming from the university station projects, from the restaurants down there and from the hotel. And the bar graph shows from each of them what has been the revenue coming under each type of revenue. So for the meals tax, started in FY '15 when university station first just started, $56,000. That has grown as that has become more active. In FY '18, we took in for the year $370,000. On the hotel tax revenue, we received very little. In FY '18, as the Marriott Hotel now has come online and is up and running, we're seeing an increase in what we receive. The hotels graph is on a quarterly basis. So we went from just over a year ago, $8,000 a quarter, to our last quarter in the most recent fiscal year is $101,000.
So that's tracking for $400,000 annually, and meals tax is tracking for almost $400,000 annually?
Yes. So right now, this looks like it's tracking at about $800,000 a year. We will get our next quarter in just a couple of weeks. Kathy Foley gets that in the treasurer's office. The state sends us that money. So right after the closeout of March, we'll see the next quarter, and we can update. But that is some, you know, very solid revenue. And it's additional revenue, non-tax revenue, coming from people, our residents and people from out of town, eating at those restaurants and staying in that hotel. The board asked the Long Range Financial Planning Committee last spring to take a look at how the town might use this money in the budget. And the Long Range did that this year. They had several meetings where they looked at the level of funds coming in, and then they looked at, well, what would be the best use of that for the town? There's some issues with this revenue that in some ways you can't automatically count on it.
Right.
If, if the hotel goes out of business, or a restaurant goes out of business, or different things can affect that, you might see a fluctuation in the money. So the Long Range talked through, you know, they would not want to suggest to the selectmen to apply that to the operating budget because it's not guaranteed, sustainable going forward. They looked at, do we need it for our reserve account or OPEB liability? But really felt like those had been addressed, that the town had done a good job of addressing that. So they really, after talking through, really felt that this should be used to help the capital budget and to help the town address the area that we would not meeting our financial policies.
So I do have a question, and in part, it comes from the discussion at Finance Commission last week. So all these things, as you explain it, make perfect sense, and this is how we collectively have been thinking and putting these forward. But the Finance Commission, they had, they had concerns, and I know this is an important project. They had specific concerns about the field lighting. And I've been thinking about it a lot, and I, I think this is a good project, and I have a but. It's a large amount, and Finance Commission had ajuda over the totality of all the capital articles. You've already broken it down. We should be investing more in our base capital. We have been wanting to do other projects, and we now have the resources to do it. We hadn't been utilizing or putting to, investing the meals tax. Now we have the hotel tax. Part, we were trying to wait and see what was predictable.
Yes.
And we were doing some other things, and then this year, we said, we've accumulated...
Yes.
...a sizable amount, not that we intended to sit on it, but we were looking at what's important to put it into. So I have a suggestion, and my suggestion is that we do the recreation field lighting in two pieces. That we do the design now, and we come back in the fall, because I, I personally think we're going to have a fall town meeting. We haven't had a fall town meeting...
Two years.
Two years off?
Two years off.
And I was thinking about it as well. This year, we don't have a state election. We don't have a national election, which, when you put that into the town clerk's calendar along with a fall town meeting, is a lot. It's not why we make the decision, but I have heard that, phew, we don't have a fall town meeting because of those other things. But that, because I'm not sure that 7.25 is the right amount. I don't think we have, you know, often, we do the design first so we know what the exact amount needed is. So I think if we did the design, we could come back in the fall and have it comprehensive because we have to address the gas lines. We have to address water in the field and everything else. We want to make sure we do it once, and we do it right. And a couple of things were said at the Finance Commission meeting that were informative that I hadn't heard before, hadn't maybe retained before, and that is, we're looking at the Westwood Lodge and what happens to that field. I'm not talking about the lodge project. I'm not a participant in those discussions. But that it could go offline for a short period of time, and I'm not sure. Nora, do you know when the timing of that might be?
The thought is that it would not be accessible this fall, but it would be available next spring.
Okay. So what we don't want to do is converge, taking a Thurston field offline at the same time we have this other field. But the other comment was about the Hanlon building program. At some point, whatever that program is, could disrupt field usage. So we know we have high demand for fields. It's a given. We know we need more. I think most people agree, especially users really feel that way, and we want to make sure we do it thoughtfully. So my, my issue is not whether or not to do this. I think we win good favor if we just do it in two pieces because I think the totality of everything, it really felt like it was overwhelming the Finance Commission, and we want their support because that hopefully leads to good support at town meeting. And yes is a good answer when things are properly explained and justified. I think we would be in a better place to justify this if we go in with the design all prepared and exact bid amount, which is often what large projects do. And this, this rises to a large project standard. So I just put that out there as thoughts I have had since being at the Finance Commission meeting last week.
Yeah, I watched the whole meeting.
Yeah, can I respond to that, though? Because I've talked to a number of people on FinCom who are with me, are supportive of this project. It's fascinating to hear that FinCom has ajuda over a $725,000 expense in a $100 million budget. Be that as it may, we know we need to do some planning. The lodge will be offline at some point. The Hanlon, potentially the Sheen, will be offline at some point. The state has predicted that over the next 10 years, we will increase by 300 children. We don't have enough field space as we sit here today. We fight in the fall, and we fight in the spring. So it's amazing to me that such a quality of life issue that we have the money for, it has suddenly become this lightning rod. So there may be a few people on FinCom who are not supporting this, but there are, there are plenty who are. We have the money. We have a philosophy of using the hotels and meals tax in a broad range of expenses. In this round, we've covered recreation, we've covered schools, and we've covered DPW. Of all the things that we could kick the can down the road on, this is fascinating that one that will improve the quality of life for families and children has become the lightning rod. So I think we need to go forward. We have the money. We have, we have coalesced around it. It's fascinating. $100 million budget, and we want to pick at the $725,000 one that offers immediate improvement to quality of life.
Okay. Pam, where did the 7.25 number come from? If we don't have a design...
The call.
Because I, there's no design yet, right?
Where the numbers come for all these? I mean, if we're going to nitpick, let's go through all of them.
Well, since that's the largest one, it's the easiest one to ask.
Yeah. The Rec Department did submit that. They had also submitted, because a lot of the projects we do do in two phases. They had said the design phase would be about $65,000.
Okay.
And they got a bid on that. Todd worked with them on that. So I think that 7.25 was more of an estimate, not the same specific amount you'd get detail that you would have if you had designed first.
Aren't these all estimates?
Well, they're all estimates, but, but that, with the...
I mean, isn't everything up here on estimate?
Well, the design for new fields is...
I mean, it could come in lower than 7.25, right?
It could.
Just like the Perry Kraus Pond maintenance project might come in under.
I hope I was clear. I didn't say I don't think we should be doing it. I'm just suggesting doing it in two, two pieces because I do believe we have a fall town meeting, so I don't want to, I don't want to be misunderstood for that.
And what I'm saying is, I think there's an immediate need, and that's not the one that we should cut in two pieces. Let's go through these. Let's go through these tonight, Nancy, and see what we can pull off.
But immediate, we were just told, the Westwood Lodge is offline in the fall, so we wouldn't want this one to be disrupted, the field to be disrupted at the same time that the lodge is offline. But that's neither permitted, nor am I talking about the project.
Right. And also, I was at the Downey School last week, Nora. He was non-committal about the spring of 2020.
Correct. The thought was that it would be unlikely that this field would be ready by the spring.
Correct. So we're talking two seasons when we're already at each other today.
I got that backwards. It was unlikely the field would be ready for the fall, expected to be ready by the spring, but it all will be depending on when the approval is granted.
I mean, hey, if, if people think this is too heavy, let's go through them. I think there's definitely some we could push down the road. I just find it fascinating that this one particular one. Do we want to go through that exercise tonight?
Sure. The HVAC, I think Emily put those forth.
Correct.
What do you have?
Yes.
I haven't been at Long Range Planning to have the details, but I think it's a good discussion to have.
Yes. The, there are some HVAC issues in the middle school, and the schools would like to go forward with those. And as now, you know, their focus is on the elementary school building. They know it'll be a while before there was anything major at the middle school, so they'd like to start addressing.
Did they have a flood or a water break or something at the middle school?
They did.
Is that related to it, or is that unrelated?
I don't know. It's related to this, but if you talk to Tom about this HVAC project, this is a significant problem in, in the middle school.
Yeah, can we talk about the swap body multipurpose vehicle for a minute? This was a concept the Fire Chief found in Europe.
Right.
Right.
Let's study that for a little while, 400 grand. I'd like to know what other municipalities are using it. I'd like to know the success rates.
Yep.
I'd like to know the metrics on how it worked, what the efficiencies were, if any. It's $400,000. I've never seen one.
I think it's a new, didn't he tell us it's in Europe?
He told, he told us all about it. He explained to what it does.
I have no problem with waiting on that.
Let's kick that down the road.
No problem. I, I think at the same time, it's very interesting, and if, correct me if I don't remember this right, but I thought he said that we would be trading in two trucks...
Correct.
...for that one.
Correct.
So their value isn't going to change much if we wait for what the, I would think not, for what a redeemable amount would be towards the new truck. So, you know, that's, that too could wait, and if it's, we're compelled to do it in the fall, we can come back in the fall. It just allows us to have more time to study it.
And I'd want to clarify, because I think it got said at the Finance Commission meeting. So, you know, there's, if you just said that this article, they, they felt that the capital was heavy because Article 1 and 2 were higher, but those are at the levels that we're trying to get to. This one was a bit heavier because we did have, we had held on the meal and hotel tax until we were able to have some analysis on it. It's coming in stronger. So we certainly could not be at this level going forward every year because it's that, not that much coming in from the hotel and meals. But I just want to clarify that we would not, there was some discussion where they were mixing this a little bit with the road bond, and they're really not related. If we took something off this list, it's not going to let us fund the debt on that road bond.
No, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
No, I just wanted to clarify.
I think we should keep this money...
Yes.
...where it is, whether it be in free, well, free cash is, free cash rolls in, but meals tax, I think we hold it there.
Yes. So if something came off this list or was revised, we would not use that to fund something else. It would sit and wait and be there that if you came back at the fall town meeting and you wanted to do something, then it would be there.
You know, the $20,000 last one was intended to kind of couple with the lighting to do more of a study on those five acres. We want to hold off on the study? Fine by me.
I don't think we should.
I don't think we should either.
I don't think so either. Yeah, I think that that...
I think that's, we own the land as a town, we should look at how...
If we're going to push things down the road, the difference between initiating the study in the summer versus the fall may not be...
Well, what I think is interesting, I don't think the lights will be done by the fall of 2019 at any field.
No, but I think the longer you delay, the more you exacerbate the problem.
Well, I wouldn't, I, that's why I'm really only saying this because I really duly believe we're going to have a Fall Town Meeting. Through conversations, I can't say these are the five things or 10 things right now, but it just, it feels like we're going to have enough monetary things, there's new growth, there's new, there are things that might be there, and it's, there is a tool to help us bridge the time between two town meetings. And I think this falls into that category perfectly. This being the lights, I want to be clear.
I actually think it's the fire, the fire truck.
And the fire truck, I don't disagree on that.
No, I don't think it's the end. I feel very strongly we should move forward with the recreational.
Well, what I find interesting is that they say $65,000 for design, right? So if they have a number for design, how do they come up with the 725 without a design?
You know, again, it's interesting that we're putting the spotlight on recreation lighting. I mean, couldn't I ask that about all of these? Who did the analysis on technology, roofing, repair and maintenance, furniture? You know, how many bids did they get, from whom?
Well, at least, at least they know.
If we're going to get that granular as a board, let's be that granular on every single item. I think it's fascinating that we have families in this town who can't attend children's games because the games have to be played at 3 o'clock, because we don't have enough lights at night with field space.
How late are you going to light the field till?
Outside of traffic.
How much time will we get? I'm just curious, when, in a season, do we know?
I don't know, Nancy.
She did do a calculation.
Four weeks on each end?
Well, I'm more mean, real time, because it's later out later.
Right. Because during the summer, it's not the issue.
On the tennis court lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's probably very similar, yeah.
But tennis people would come out and play later than kids would be.
And not little kids playing too, so.
You know, so as a board, we've always taken the position, even before I was here, that we're not the subject matter experts on these issues. That we rely on the people that we hire, the full-time staff, to make sound judgments in their expertise. We have the Director of Recreation, who we compensate to run this program. She did her due diligence and came forward with an estimate of $725,000. And now we're hearing, we don't know who we're hearing from, but we're...
Yes, we do, it's FinCom, watching the entire meeting.
So who on FinCom, I'm just curious, is the recreation field lighting expert?
I don't think they're professing to be experts.
Well, they're not professing to be experts, and they also said they weren't sure they had the right to judge what we were putting in front of them. But if they take down the whole thing, I don't think they can line item veto, although that can be done on Town Meeting floor. But I'm not sure if FinCom is going to come completely through, and if they vote indefinitely postpone it, all of these will have to wait. I think, if you watched the meeting, I think what Nancy's thinking is that we can soften the blow a little bit.
Yeah.
And get the rest of them passed.
Take out the fire vehicle, $400,000.
Yeah, I think we do both.
Yeah, I don't agree to take out the field lighting.
Well, Nancy, did you want to do a motion on the field lighting?
Um, well, we'll do them one at a time because I don't know where... Yes, I will move that we reduce the allocation to the recreation field lighting from $725,000 to cover design money at $65,000 with the understanding and expectation that once we have that design in hand, we will return to Town Meeting for the balance of the funds. That's a caveat, that's not the motion, it's to reduce it.
So this is mean spirited and petty and a machine.
I'm not mean spirited or petty.
This has a lot to do with other issues. Let's be honest.
So you're not going to second?
So that's my motion.
I'm not going to second it, I think it's outrageous.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay. Next, Nancy?
Um, yeah, I don't disagree with the suggestion that we hold off on the allocation for the swap body multipurpose vehicle for the Fire Department at $400,000, that we request that the Fire Chief submit additional information and that we analyze it further before making that commitment and recommendation to Town Meeting.
Okay. Is there anyone a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Todd, who gave the estimate of $150,000 for the Council on Aging HVAC system?
I believe Todd, I want to speak differently, but I believe Tom Philbin worked with several contractors in doing so, along with Jimmy McCarthy, our facilities manager.
What is this Kirby Street retaining wall?
That's the retaining wall behind the Kirby Street Municipal Building that is completely rotted away and being undermined by animals.
Todd, you need a...
Get a microphone.
And how long's it been rotted away?
Oh, for at least 10 years, I would say.
Oh, so that can hold off.
If you want to let it hold off.
Sure. So I move that we remove the $250,000 for the Kirby Street retaining wall? Okay, so we'll fund DPW but not children, okay.
And that's not the case.
John, I'm just curious, is that a dig directly at me or no?
Or my colleagues, I just, if it's been rotted for 10 years, I don't understand why I can't wait to the fall.
So you're basically saying you're going to pat my back, I'm the spoiled, chilled child in a room that's...
Todd, I'm not going to debate with you.
I'm just saying that, because I'm not one to sit back, John. If you're going to say that I'm doing this just for myself or just my department, that's not the case. Everything my department does is for the betterment of the town. I hope so.
Let's see what else we can take off.
Be respectful. You can differ your opinion with them, but just be respectful.
Well, I made a motion, it wasn't seconded.
Do you have any other motions?
No.
Okay.
So if I'm not mistaken, that will bring us down to $400,000 plus 660?
65 for the study.
65.
Well, it's 65 off of 725.
Oh, six, yes.
660 plus 400, so that would reduce that. But I think in doing so, I think we have to make it clear, one, that it wasn't unanimous to do this with the recreation field lighting, and that we did discuss the design with it coming back in the very near future, likely a Fall Town Meeting.
Right. Anything else, Pam?
I believe that takes down just over 1.3 million.
Yes.
Yes, you're...
I wouldn't go anywhere.
Yep, the final item is the, is the road bond.
Yeah, you might as well stay there.
So the 4.9 million dollar road bond coming this year, we talked in terms of that would need to be funded as a debt exclusion. The annual debt service of about $570,000, that costs about $86 a year to our homeowners.
Okay.
There was some discussion at the FinCom.
Yes, there was.
This, in conjunction with the capital, is kind of what...
Right.
Well, the, there's not a lot on Town Meeting agenda this year, and not to minimize the importance of a $94 million budget, that's still extremely important. I've had concerns about this being a debt exemption since it first came out, is how would we possibly fund this? I think we've already discussed a little bit about not taking the money that's in the meals tax, that we will plan for a field lighting, but that we look at this in and of itself, and you provided us with additional information. And I know timing is important because of other projects, so we have the opportunity to look at this and break it down and not do it as a large 4.9 million dollar funding, but to look at the 109 sidewalk and then potentially, again in the fall, look at funding if we have some available resources that we can allocate to borrow and maybe not need a debt exemption.
Yes. We can't do the whole thing right now, doesn't fit into the debt budget or the overall budget. And I just want to say again, the long range looked at, well, what if we used meal or ho tax revenue to fund this, to take 570,000 of that a year, simply too much for this debt.
Takes away from the other things we're doing.
Takes away from what you could do, so many other projects every year. And we do have a current road bond dropping off in a couple of years that we could then bring another road bond in to replace it. So what we could do this year, and we talked to Todd, the first piece that could go forward would be the sidewalk portion on Route 109, about 900,000. We could fund that with a 10-year bond within our budget now, and then look to do the other pieces at subsequent Town Meetings. And maybe in the fall, we could look at, do we have other revenue at that point to fund another portion of it?
Todd, the 109 Carter project, again, I'm going on recollection, so I want to see if I've got this right. You said that part of what we need to do is when the project's underway, and I think that's the sidewalk money.
Correct, yeah.
And that Dedham Westwood Water District brings the road back up to the condition they found it in, but that 109 from Gay Street?
No, from approximately Palm Plain up to...
Palm Plain, down to Bubbling Brook, needs much improvement. And if we don't intervene soon and wait a while, the ultimate cost will be greater.
Correct.
And we saw, I think you showed some great slides at Finance Commission about the different stages of repair we can do that doesn't require us to do a full reclamation.
A full-depth reclamation.
Full-depth reclamation, okay. So remember some things. So if we, this is leading to a question.
Sure.
Yeah, maybe tomorrow. If we go out in the fall for approval for the $2 million 109 Carter project, does that change the timing of what you plan to do?
It would, in that we would like to address the sidewalk deficiencies this coming construction season, which would mean we would need the funding by July 1 to do so. With respect to the overall paving, we could sit back and wait for Fall Town Meeting, assuming the Fall Town Meeting is inevitable, receive the funding to do the paving portion of 109 because we're not going to do that till...
They're not going to do it till spring anyway, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So it's the sidewalk portion, I guess.
Correct.
Right.
And the 900 that was suggested is, wait a minute, I thought the 900 was for the sidewalk.
It is.
If we do 900 now for the sidewalk.
Sidewalk, right.
It is down at the bottom third.
Oh, it's part of the 2 million, sorry.
Is that part of the 2 million?
Yes.
So...
Correct, yes.
So that would get you to...
Yeah, don't confuse the pavement preservation program with the 2 million.
Right, but I'm just going on what you said. I thought you said you wouldn't be able to do the sidewalk portion along 109, am I right?
The 900,000 would fund the sidewalk work along Route 109.
Just that portion of the sidewalk, not the reclamation.
Not the reclamation, not the paving, nothing else.
I thought it was with the 109, I'm sorry.
So, but if I remember correctly, it takes all year, or the winter for it to settle down?
To settle down, yeah, exactly.
So we wouldn't be doing it until spring anyway?
So it's not ideal.
I mean, and nothing is. I think we've done our job in presenting, you know, a lot of what the town has wanted over the past couple of years anyways, with respect to sidewalks and crosswalk enhancements and paving enhancements. We've done our due diligence as far as presenting what we need for funding to do so.
Yeah, okay.
So then we'd be coming in at, what, 4, $4 million next, in the Fall Town Meeting? Right?
Or the other portion of the 2 million.
Or the other portion of Route 109.
Or the other portion of the 2 million.
And then just put the other work off.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be roughly 1.1-ish, give or take.
And the disadvantage, one of the disadvantages of breaking it up, just so you know the disadvantage, I'm not...
Oh, I know, I know.
Is that you can't bid the entire project out and do, which is what he would do.
Right.
Probably get a little better price if you could do the whole thing in one shot. Doing it in two pieces maybe adds to the cost, but I don't know.
It could be a little bit different, though, with the sidewalks, because typically the sidewalk contractor, well, the paving contractor would subcontract out some of the sidewalk work, unless you get a contractor that's familiar with doing both. But, I mean, does this, does this kill us? No, I just think at this point, we presented what the entire package will represent versus splitting it up into segments.
Yeah.
Anything's manageable.
If you watched the meeting, and I did, and O'Nancy was there, it just seems like, no pun intended, that's going to be a roadblock.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it's just, you know, as Todd said, it's not a matter of that we're not going to do these.
Right.
It's just, maybe we can't do it all now, we have to look at them and...
You know, I'm, to try to explain why I think the conversation last week was helpful, it's not telling us what to do, but I think it informs us on other perspectives and how we might go about it. So that, that's why I think, I think for the townspeople and for being responsive, but at the same time, you know, leading on what makes sense, what are good projects, we really, we always try to do that. I think we're just saying, you know, the combination, maybe it's better to step back on this and do it in pieces as effectively as possible and not put a debt exemption on the books.
Yeah, I mean, and I look at this saying, you know, we possibly could fund the crosswalk safety improvement through the meals tax next year or in the fall.
With additional money that comes in.
Additional money that comes in between now and then.
That would go against everything we've...
We could fund the sidewalk.
Everything we've said about the meals tax, but it's just interesting.
It's a one-time...
FinCom, this appointed board is now making all the budget decisions. I, I'm fascinated.
They're not making mine. They're informing.
I just, and one last final note, I just want to stress the importance, though, of even that fourth component, I said they're all equally as important, but that fourth component, we've discussed this for years, it is, it really is, it's critical to supplement that deficiency, and we're going to be handcuffed this year. We are literally taking our Chapter 90 lawman and everything that we have left this current year, we'll have it down to zero by the end of this construction season. So as far as crack sealing, any type of preventative measure, we're not going to be able to do.
So do we want to wait until after the election to make this decision, or do we want to, I mean, it's on the ballot, or at least the language.
No, it's not unless we approve it tonight.
That's my question, right, so...
I've gone back and forth on this so much.
Do you have an opinion on this? What do you think, Nancy?
I'll refer to the two of you.
I mean, I'm convinced that I think FinCom will pass it, but it won't be, it won't be a supermajority, how's that?
And I'm, no, and that's okay, and it's, you know, if it didn't pass at the ballot, you know, the people have spoken, but it just... And I've gone back and forth. I wish, I wish we had another $900,000, which would make the decision more straightforward and we could hold off. I just, I guess where I'm landing now is that we shouldn't, should not go forward with a debt exemption. I really don't want to. I've been pondering this for the past three months since we first talked about how this kind of amount would be funded, and I personally just don't want us to. I respect, and always do respect, the opinion of my colleagues, and I hope that if you feel we should, that I hope we're successful. I just, I just don't think we should.
I mean, everyone knows, you know, with the elementary school, everyone is expecting it, right? So that's everyone, as soon as they hear another, you know, debt exemption, everyone panics. So I'm leaning in favor, Todd, of just doing the nine for now and funding it within the, within the budget, so that at least we can get that done and then gear up for Town Fall Meeting. But when would, if we were going to do it for Town Fall Meeting, when would it go on the ballot?
Not until the spring.
Wouldn't go on until March, go in the spring.
You have to have an election. So it wouldn't, we could do a borrowing potentially within 2 and 1/2 and not need debt exemption if we go to the fall.
That would be the goal, if we could hold on some, that we reassess in the fall, and maybe it's not the whole rest of it, but an additional piece that's within.
Right.
And how are we funded by real new growth that we, beyond what we estimated? And how are we funded by real new growth that we, beyond what we estimated?
Correct, we would borrow again, but that we could assume the debt service with additional growth that's above what we are currently projecting.
Okay.
We would know that at Fall Town Meeting.
All right.
So I'll move that we amend the capital article on DPW-related projects to reflect the inclusion of only $900,000, only, not really the right word, of $900,000 to proceed with the Route 109 sidewalk project, in that we defer the other components of the previously proposed article to future Town Meeting dates, and that we do not take action to place a debt exemption ballot question on the April 20-whatever election.
Okay, second?
30th, excuse me.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That's it, too. There are other, there's always opportunities, or not always, there's sometimes opportunities that the state proposes towards, proposes towards each community, and we'll, as always, try to take advantage of every one of those opportunities. Not going to take a knee and say no, but...
Right, right, well...
We'll do what we can do.
Yeah, we are, we're all working to get it done, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Dan.
Did we cover everything we needed to?
We covered everything, so I would update those warrant articles, and then that's what we would send out to the Finance and Warrant Commission over the next day or so that they have that before their hearing on Monday night.
Okay.
And then just the final thing I needed you to do is just a one-page on the transfers in the current year from the Selectmen's Reserve account. There's just two transfers to have you make.
Okay.
One is to essentially reverse the transfer we previously had you do for $70,000 for the building maintenance salary, because that was early in the year when we needed that change. Now we have that on an Article 1, they have the funds, they're going to make their own transfer from salary to expense. So we would be restoring the $70,000 back to your account. And then the other transfer is just $26,000 to cover that emergency repair work that you had authorized on the Reynolds Farm, the $26,000.
Okay.
So we would need you to approve that. That would then have the balance in your account at just under $100,000 as we head into year-end if there were any issues that came up before the year closes out.
So we want to do the motion? Do we need to vote, vote on it, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what are we voting, exactly? What does the motion need to be?
Right, what's the motion? You're voting to support these transfers as presented by Pam on this table.
Is that an official motion? So we're going to vote to reserve, to, to do the 2019 FY19 transfers to, back to the Selectmen account?
For the $70,000.
From $70,000 and $26,000 for emergency repair for a total of $99,000.
No, 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 that's the balance at the end.
The balance, after you take those two actions.
Oh, after you put it back, okay.
So the transfer is $96,000, so I second it.
It's 99, but Pam, I'm...
No, it's 99 is the balance.
But this is a negative, I've taken that out.
Yeah, see, okay.
So it's just a $70,000 transfer back to the Selectmen account.
Back to the account, and then another transfer of $26,000 out of the account.
Out of the account, correct, okay.
Does this actually accomplish that? Shouldn't the 70 be a positive on this, then, and not a negative?
It is down here.
Oh.
Down the bottom.
Thank you.
The balance sheet, top and bottom balance.
Sorry, it's confusing. I apologize for that.
Should have been split in half, and then you would see, like Pam's usual ones, where she's transferring money.
Yes, we just, we just wanted to...
I'm good now, but John may want to make the motion. It took me a while.
I move that we adopt the...
Restoration of...
Restoration of $70,000 to the Selectmen's Fund.
Select Board.
Select Board's fund, and reduce by $26,000 the Reynolds Farm emergency repair.
I will second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
All done now?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for joining us. Okay, so next we have to review the annual Town Meeting warrant articles. We have removal of some articles from the Town Meeting warrants. We have some proposed language. We don't need the ballot-related road improvement anymore, Mike, right?
Nope.
Or you have the emergency, the community electric, electricity aggregation, which I'm sure is why you're sitting here, right?
What are we doing?
Okay.
And then Dan has also some modified language for the article with regard to TIF.
Okay.
So what order are we going to...
So do we want to remove them first?
Yeah, you can remove the first ones, yeah.
John, you want to remove the articles, page 40?
Page 40, yeah.
So Nora, I'd love to hear about the removal of the Open Space and Recreation Plan from the agenda. I did watch some of the meeting, but could you just give us a very quick synopsis of the thinking behind removing it and what the plan is instead?
Yes, so the Open Space and Recreation Plan needs to be adopted by the Planning Board and approved by the State Department of Conservation and Recreation. It doesn't require any other local approvals. The thought was, just like the comprehensive plan, the same process was intended, to bring them both to Town Meeting for endorsement, to get buy-in of the community for two reasons. One is to make people aware of the planning that's going on, and the other reason is to make the planners, the Planning Board and the committee members, take into account the opinions of all voters when they're drafting these plans. So the idea was that when the Open Space and Recreation Plan was being developed, if the committee knew that it was going to Town Meeting for endorsement, it would take into consideration the thoughts of not just the committee members, but everyone who may be involved in the town and use our open space and recreation facilities. So the intention was to bring it to Town Meeting for endorsement. We had done this most recently with the pedestrian and bicycle safety plan. If you remember that, about maybe about five or six years ago, we had a joint plan with Dedham. Planning Board adopted it, and then we sent it to Town Meeting for endorsement. At that time, the Finance and Warrant Commission was fine with that, and they were, had no concerns with recommending endorsement of that plan. It was a, it was a shorter plan. It seemed to me, when we went to the Finance and Warrant Commission meeting in the beginning of the month, the members were not interested in reading such a lengthy document and were concerned that because the open space plan proposes improvements to the town, which, if they were ever followed through on, would cost funding, and that they would be asked at some point in the future, on a project-specific basis, to recommend for or against that funding, they were concerned that an endorsement of the plan at this point could, could make people think that they were supporting things that they had not yet reviewed.
So what we'll do, then, is...
We'll send it directly from, the, the plan has been adopted by the Planning Board, so now that it's adopted, we will send it straight to the state for review by the Department of Conservation and Recreation.
Can we get a copy of that final version? Because I know they did amend things in it along the way.
They did, yes, yeah.
They spent a lot of time on, on that, and as did the committee, giving them materials, so...
Yes, so the, the final plan is posted on the website now, but I can make sure that we get you copies to go through. And then, then the Planning Board also noted that they will then rethink the comprehensive plan, because if the, if the FinCom was concerned about just the open space goals and what costs may come out of that, the comprehensive plan is, is more comprehensive, so it has goals in many different elements in the town, several of which have financial obligations associated with actions, if those actions were ever followed through on. So maybe, maybe we will do the same thing. I had thought that the comprehensive plan and the open space plan were both endorsed by the, the Town Meeting in 2000. Looking back at the warrant, it appears that at that time, we were able to put warrant, not, we were able to bring items to Town Meeting for a resolution as opposed to an endorsement under a warrant, and I don't know that that's the case under the current charter, but we could also consider that.
We can do resolutions.
There's nothing that says you can't bring a resolution.
We choose not to do it often.
We haven't done it in a while, but...
It appears that in 2000, that was the process that was used.
For both the open...
The Town Meeting resolved to accept the...
And you had said something at meetings, I think we need to get clarification, because as long as I've been involved in town government, Finance Commission has always recommended warrant articles, even if they weren't financial.
I, what...
Just named them differently because of that.
It said is that they didn't have the, they didn't have the obligation before.
Yes, they did. I think they did.
Yeah, they always had it, they just weren't.
Yeah, it just, the name was changed to reflect that it was more than financial, what they actually did.
Right.
They, yeah, they always...
In 31 years, we brought all kinds of things to the...
I, I understand that that was the practice to bring it, but I think before the charter amendments, the language seemed different, but...
Yeah, well, the charter amendment was exactly what Nancy was to put it, but there were a lot of things in the charter that we were doing that weren't necessarily covered in the charter, and so the last charter revision was basically to say, this really...
This is what we do, and that was the statement I was trying to make, that the previous charter did not, did not cover...
So, for instance, I was on Plan, on Finance Commission, and planning articles were as excruciatingly painful as they are today, and we had to go through them, and we had to look...
Something's happened, changed, to me.
And we had to, and we kept asking for redline versions, and we kept asking for it earlier than it ever actually came in, and history just keeps repeating itself and repeating itself, because we had to come up with recommendations. We didn't do that because we thought we might add some value. It was really challenging, and it still is, because it's a lot of technical language, they tend to be very dense, and it's hard to track all the changes and try to be responsible for understanding what they mean, so...
Two sets of public hearings.
So we have Nora to explain them to us.
So it's a public hearings that, that overlap.
Yeah.
Because the timing of the public hearings is necessary to come close enough to Town Meeting. So unfortunately, the Finance and Warrant Commission public hearings do not wait until the hearings for the Planning Board are completed, so that's why we have articles that are still in flux, and that will happen year after year after year.
It will. It, it, it does, and there are times when we even went up to Town Meeting and meetings, sorry, before Town Meeting to conclude things.
I remember, it's on Town Meeting floor.
Right.
Yeah, and that's the process that has to be followed if we're going to have hearings where we actually consider the input of people who speak at those hearings.
Look at the senior center, right? It was going to be much bigger. Got amended on Town Floor.
Good times.
All right, so we remove articles first. John, page 40.
Listen, it was just...
He just touched this.
It'll work when I do it.
Whole business.
Okay. So I move that we remove warrant articles dealing with street acceptance, street acceptances. Since no streets have been brought forward for consideration, the board should remove this article. We will remove the endorsement of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. The Planning Board voted at its meeting on March 12 to remove this from consideration at Town Meeting, and to remove two miscellaneous articles, there are no more articles that could be considered for this year's meeting, so the board should remove these placeholders.
I will second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so now we have the language. We don't need the ballot question anymore.
No.
We just got rid of that. Community electric aggregation?
So the only thing to say about the community electric aggregation is that there had been an indication, especially from the Finance Commission, that when we come up with a plan that will actually be brought to the town and implemented with the town, the contract, that it will include one option that say, that guarantees, is guaranteed at least initially, because things change over the course of the two years of the contract, but initially we'll save, have one option to save them money. Now, one, there are two pieces here. There's one to get all the electric aggregated and get it the best possible price, and then there's another aspect to increase the amount of electricity that's being provided to the residents that's green versus electricity is produced by non-renewable energy. To the point, and usually it's the one that's got the least amount of non-renewable energy, least about, the least amount of green energy that's less expensive, and so there will be options that will be greater than the price they could get from ever source, and they could stay, they could stay with ever source, but there will be one option on this that will beat ever source's prices.
Okay. So I assume the language?
It's, yeah, this is, this is the wording of the new language that's been presented. And it's very close to what Dedham, Dedham has for language.
Yes.
They, Weack and Tom went to meet with Dedham this week. Dedham said that they had no problem getting it through Town Meeting, nor have they had any issues in the implementation of, of this. They think it's, it's gone along very well, and they, they feel comfortable in recommending it to the town westward.
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
If we're giving people options, that means everybody's going to need to select, or is there a default position if somebody doesn't?
Yeah, the default position, so the default position is 5% above whatever source is being required to utilize in green energy. I think it's 14% currently, 14%. So that means that...
It's not the 19.
Yeah, that means that the percentage of green energy in what's going to be coming to the residents as the basic rate will be 19% green and the remaining 81.
Okay, and that may or may not be cost preferable?
No, that will be, that's, that will be cost...
That'll be more costly, more costly.
Yeah, okay.
Every, every, every sample that we saw at the meeting...
So the default is more costly?
No, it's less costly. No, no, sorry.
It costs less per person, but they'll get more green energy. Does that make sense?
No, it doesn't.
So we'll lock it in at a price...
That's better than whatever source is providing.
That's better than whatever source is offering now.
Right.
And if, this is only to give us authority if, when and if the plans come in front of us, and we'll be discussing with them.
So how many options are people going to have that they will choose from? I thought it was two before. It was default or it was greener.
It's default and greener, but you can buy levels of greenness.
Levels, that's it. So in some communities, they have 50%...
You can get a Kelly green, you can get a, you know, dark green.
They have a 50% option in some communities and 100% option, you can have stuff in between.
I wish you could see it. So what I'm looking for is ease for people in that residents, and that we can keep talking about this, it can still go forward, but that it's not difficult for residents to understand what they need to do, that it's pretty straightforward. We aren't trying to make people's lives...
No, and we might not, if it could, if a...
And we don't have to enter into the contract if we don't think it works.
Correct, we don't have to enter. This is only to give them the authority to go look and see if they can. Basically, we're buying electricity in bulk.
And the, one of the advantages of having this, this available to residents is we're all getting emails, phone calls, trying to get us to buy electricity from different sources, and none of those sources have been vetted. You're making decisions based on a guess that you're being told the truth and you're oftentimes aren't. This is something that the town will have vetted, that MIPC will have vetted, and we are basically bringing it to the residents as an honest way to get your electricity.
Yeah, and they don't have, they can opt out. They don't have to opt in.
They don't have to opt in.
Right, I just want to understand from the consumer's standpoint.
Yes.
The ones that have already made the decision won't be opted in. They will remain where the, with the provider they have now until and unless they have to opt in, yeah.
Until their contract is out.
After they get done their contract.
Yes. Would you like to speak, young lady? Come on up. You have to come up where the microphone is, okay? Just so people at home can hear you.
Hi, Maria. I would like to say also that is, the price stability is another incentive, I think, because I was talking to some of the people at the senior center, and when I told them that the price would be fixed for two or three years, they thought, oh, that was great, because it keep going, it becomes more and more expensive every year.
Right.
So it's also...
Lock it in for two years, or whatever the length of the contract.
You lock it in for two, three years, and hopefully you lock it in at that right time, so that it, and we have seen the example of Dedham. If you can come to the presentation tomorrow night, but in any event, we have slides, they will see the Dedham data over a period of three or four years of their contract, and over time, only one time, ever source was a little lower, otherwise ever source was going up where the other, that other line was staying constant.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Maria. Thanks for all the work the committee's doing to help educate people on it.
Thanks, and hopefully, the meeting went very well on, at the senior center.
And it's recorded, which is great.
Yeah, it's recorded, and tomorrow we have the second one.
Yeah, good.
Thank you, Maria. So does anybody have any questions on the language? Because that's what we have to do, is vote to accept the revised language. That's on page 41 and 42.
Sometimes using these things, yep, the language is on 41. If this accomplishes what was said, then...
Yes.
Yes, it does.
And we've modeled it after other...
Dedham.
Yes, Dedham.
So...
Okay, give me one second.
Number three. Because we've already done the first two. Page 42.
Yeah, okay, so...
Next page, keep going. Right there, vote number three.
Let's do number three?
Yeah.
So I vote that the board accept the revised language for the community electricity aggregation article.
I second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, moving along, we have...
We got one more, another revised article.
Okay, Dan?
Late revised article. Yep.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Are you speaking with the TIF?
Yep.
Under what agenda item?
Warrant articles?
Warrant articles.
It specifically lists something we're going to discuss.
Well, if you're uncomfortable with it, we can do it Monday night, before FinCom.
We've been subject to challenge. We posted an agenda that says, "Review Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles," semicolon.
Oh, I got something with a revised agenda. Did we not revise the agenda, Mike? I got an email saying a revised agenda.
It then references...
I don't know when that was put out.
Number 5580, which gives a memo...
Yeah, let's wait.
Of the items to be discussed tonight. There's nothing about a TIF. So, you know my position, go forward, but you're opening yourself up to a challenge. You specifically listed everything about the TIF.
Well, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, John. I feel pretty comfortable that when you get review annual town meeting warrant articles, and your booklet includes this particular article. I think that the, you know, if we're going to go in that direction, we're going to start having six-page agendas. But, you know, it's the, you know, I don't disagree with you that it's not...
It's not posted.
Not perfect, but it's also something that can be taken up on Monday night.
Why don't we do it on Monday night? Why don't we do it on Monday night?
Do it Monday night.
We're planning to meet beforehand anyway, are we?
We are.
We are now.
I'll circulate a draft, so you can see if it's...
I think, given the concern that's been raised, I think we should be responsive.
Okay.
All right, on the Legal Services Committee.
So we've revised the process that we're using for going out for the legal service, legal services? Oh, okay. And we, in the first round, and one of the main reasons for doing that, in the first round, we received an inquiry about it. We had at least one individual who expressed the interest in putting in a name for the position, looking at it as an employee position, person, the individual was currently employed, did not want to put his current job at risk. Asked if we could keep his name from publication, at least until it was further along in the process. We could not guarantee it, because we were in the 40B process, and you have to list who the candidates are in the 40B process. This is an exempt issue. The only reason why we went out on the, I said 40B, I meant 30B. The only reason why we went on the 30B is we wanted to put an RFP out there and generate some different ideas. So we couldn't guarantee it. We went through that process, we decided that we really had some questions and some issues we wanted to address, and then we wanted to go up with a second RFP. We made it, so that RFP did not go into the 30B process, so we no longer required. The other thing that would divulge it is open meetings, and we feel that that would not, that would not be a way to have the candidate come in and be considered under an open meeting process. If you assign me the responsibility on your behalf, with folks that I put together, which might not be dissimilar to the arrangement we currently have, we'll bring back, we'll do a review of the applicants and bring back finalists for the fourth consideration.
And we'll be moving this along soon.
We'll be moving along immediately. The RFPs just were issued, or the responses were just issued and received. We have multiple candidates, including the particular individual that does not want to put his job at jeopardy. And, you know, in employee situations, we do the same thing. We do not divulge the name until they're finalist. And if there are multiple finalists, they have to take a risk. They're asked before they go, their name is divulged, if there's multiple finalists, do you consent in not releasing your name? Because now we can no longer keep it.
So Mike, I was surprised by this. I got the packet on Friday afternoon and hadn't heard anything about this. And this morning, just so you know, there were nine resumes distributed to the committee. So has anybody talked to the committee members?
No.
Okay, I mean, I feel like out of respect to the people who gave up their time, I think we should explain to them what we're doing. I don't...
We're just taking it out of the committee's hand and leaving it in Mike's hands?
Well...
And then Mike...
If you make this decision, I'll explain it first thing tomorrow.
I think it would have been preferable to talk with each committee member. And so the select board will have no say in who's on the committee?
That'd be left to Mr. Gillette.
I certainly would consider what your thoughts are. I mean, I'm not going to go against the board.
Okay, so you are going to call everybody on the committee tomorrow and explain...
I will.
Thank them for their service.
I will.
Okay.
Was that really the right word we want? To disband?
Or rescind the appointment?
Well, we just rescind it, yeah. We rescind the appointment of the committee.
Right, I thought I changed that word, but I guess I did.
Okay, so I move that the board vote to rescind the Legal Services Committee and authorize the town administrator to prepare a recommendation for the engagement of new town council for the select board to consider.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, so I guess our last agenda item, we don't have to do, we just, we already did it.
Yep.
Right?
We did.
Could you tell Dan to come back? Thanks.
Okay. So next on the agenda, Mike, is the...
It's TIF.
No, the top, it's the TopGolf. TopGolf, right. But are we going into executive session or not?
Well, the question is...
It's on both, that's why I'm wondering.
Well, the question is, does anybody have any issues that they would like to discuss that are different than what's on, what's on the proposed settlement agreement, which has been distributed? If you do have questions or want to go into executive session, we prepared this, so you can do that.
Okay.
But you're going to have to come out of, out of executive session to finalize and sign and execute the agreement.
I would like to.
All right, Nancy would like to go into executive session, so we'll do that.
So I move we go into executive session?
So we have two, two...
No, you go...
Yes.
Are they both related to...
Yes, one is, and the other is executive session minutes.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
You're not taking comments from the public.
Sure, would you like to speak on something else? Yes. Come on up again.
I would like to speak about the field lights, and the fact that kids, I don't have kids in school now, but kids, you know, grow up fast, and maybe this would be their last season playing soccer, and they can't play at night, I don't know. So by putting it off, you take away to some of the children that could take advantage of it, and some of the residents also. Somebody has heard that there would be lights on the tennis courts and have already signed a petition that stated to set up a tennis league for the evening. So there are opportunities for everybody. I was wondering, by taking away that money, where are you putting it?
We're just holding it, we're not putting it anywhere.
Yeah, so this is like splurging in a way. We have this fund that we didn't have before, and we can use it to improve the life of the citizens of Westwood. I don't know why you want, you should hold it, basically, unless you have better things to do. But to me, if there are no concerns from the residents, if there is a real need for lights, I think you should do it.
I think we all agree there is a need. I think it's just how we get there is what there was a difference, a strong difference of opinion on.
I understand.
I agree with you, though, we shouldn't delay.
Sooner than later.
Decision's made.
So to give you an idea, Maria, honestly, I believe that when we put this to town meeting, people are going to say, what does the plan look like? Where are those lights going? If I'm a neighbor and I want to know if those lights are going to impact me, I'd like to go to them with a plan and say, here's the plan, here's the cost, let's get it done. Right now, we don't even have that plan. So people say, what are we getting for $725,000? I can't answer the question, except lights. That's all I can tell them. I like to at least be able to say, this is what you're getting, here's the plan, here's what it looks like. And we may have, you know, a neighbor complaining that the lights he can still see from the other end of the field. But I don't, I don't even have that to put in front of them. And I think it's hard to just throw that out there and say, you know, this is a big thing, let's come in with a plan and show them and say, this is what you're getting.
But thank you, Maria, for supporting my position. I think this board is going down a dangerous path of trying to get itself into the operations of the town.
Well, thank you for your concern.
Thank you, Maria.
Did you want to...
And the tennis courts, like Maria, are going in, in the spring, they're done.
Okay, so we're ready for a motion?
Yes, we're going to go into executive session.
For one reason?
Not for two. They're both on the air.
Well, I don't want, John usually makes the motion, so if he would like to.
I move that the select board go into executive session for the purposes of reviewing one issue related to litigation settlement. I'm sorry, yeah, I don't know my... Okay, the board, are we going into executive session to discuss two issues? The first issue pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 21-3, to discuss strategy with respect to actual litigation related to the TopGolf facility being proposed in Canton, Mass. And the second issue pursuant to general law, chapter 30A, section 21A7, to comply with special law requirements for review of executive session minutes, open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, sections 22, F and G, both of which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if discussions were in open session. The board will be returning to open session. I move at this time that the board go into executive session.
I second that.
All right, Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
We're going to executive session, we're coming back.
15 minutes.
Okay, we are back from executive session. We will be concluding our meeting this evening. We will have further discussion at our upcoming meetings. Our next meeting will be Monday, the 25th, at 6:30. I'm going to guess in the small library room.
Can we just say that we concluded we did not need to be in an open session again for what we thought we'd be talking about?
Yes, that we'll have the further discussion at our next meeting. So, motion to adjourn.
Second.
So I move we adjourn, second.
All those in favor? Aye. We concluded, our next meeting will be Monday night, 25th, in the small meeting room at the library at 6:30. See you then.